I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We need to modify the agenda to add item of business number seven. We're voting a bid. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need to approve four round of village board minutes here from the past few weeks. We'll start with April 11th, 2011. Any Arizona missions? All right. If there are none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. April 21st, 2011. Any Arizona missions? All right. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
All right. April 25th, 2011. Any Arizona missions? All right. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Village Board meeting, May 2nd, 2011. Any Arizona missions? If there are none, I'll take a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Outstanding water and sewer amounts. These are water and sewer bills that haven't been paid for the past year. As of the total amount of outstanding water and sewer for the year 2010 is $174,334.57. A full list of the liquid accounts is available for review. For water, there's a total of $54,000. Total sewer, $53,000. Water special assessment, $8,000. Sewer special assessment, $57. And in total, again, of $174,334.57. And that does not include the town or exelon.
Correct.
Okay. We have a letter, a spirited spokes bike tour. This is the letter. Dear Chupot, seven Orange County Catholic schools have come together for a spirited event to create community involvement and increase awareness of Catholic education, provide financial support, increase awareness of the importance of continuing Catholic education through high school, join a support Catholic high school, most precious blood, Sacred Heart, and St. Joe's, St. Stevens. Proceeds will be shared among all seven schools. Food donations will be accepted the day of the event. The event will take place on Saturday, May 21st, starting and finishing at the Orange County Government Center in historic Ocean. We will be following the route that is used for the tour negotiation. Can you reach up the number? And yeah. That's basically it. I'm not going to do every line. We need to vote on this?
Well, I see there's a note from the chief on this. Typically, they're asking us to indicate that we're aware that the spirited spokes tour will be held on Saturday, May 21st, 2011. Generally, more valid than that, like either certainly the police traffic role is necessary. I don't know if any roads need to be blocked off. I'm not quite sure.
It appears, though, that they, you know, they're saying that they're sending it to the Orange County Department of Public Works. And they never have anything to say about this. So maybe they just don't know that they should be contacting.
All right. So the chief says, well, this is sent to the chief. Is that your hammer?
No, that's the chief's hammer.
That's the chief. His insurance certificate and something else. I can't read that word.
Certification.
Okay.
And village board agreement, it looks like.
I'll talk to the chief tomorrow and find out if he's had contact with them.
So if the board is on, it's subject to the chief's approval.
Yeah. So let's do that then. Make a motion to approve this subject to the chief's approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. All right. Now, this is from the BFW in Garen Ocean about the Memorial Day Parade. It's always a nice event and a very worthwhile one. Dear Kyle, Commander Ralph Osterita, and the members of the veterans of foreign wars Goshen Memorial Post 1708, cordially invite you, the village trustees, and the village staff to participate in the Goshen Memorial Day Parade and services, which will be held on Monday, May 30th, 2011. The lineup for the parade will be located on Erie Street between 10:00 and 10:30 a.m., and the parade will step off at 11:00 a.m. sharp. Please contact the onsite parade organizer, Tom Robb, for your organization's position in line. Thank you in advance for your participation and assistance. It's going to be a great event. Hopefully, the whole village board can attend in March. In the past, the village has provided hot dogs at the end. I know that John Higgins did that at least one year. I'm not sure if it was village fund or his own funds. I'm guessing he probably put up the money himself. I would like to do that as well. So if any members of the board want to chip in and provide some hot dogs for them afterwards, let me know. We don't need to answer now.
He's got a book on it.
Okay. All right. Anyone have anything on this before we move on?
No.
Okay. And last for communications, we have the abstract of vouchers. This is money that has been approved and been spent. It's just through protocols. On a motion by trustee, seconded by trustee.
Court.
Bills, as examined by members of the board, were approved in accordance with abstract 2010-2011 number 27. Check numbers 1567 through 1603 in the amount of $63,006.13. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Now, we're going to start our items of business. The first thing, we're going to be appointing Sarah Goldberg as our new village treasurer. This is very exciting. Sarah's been with the village for a number of years now as our deputy treasurer and deputy clerk, and she's done a fantastic job in that role. After our previous treasurer retired, Sarah filled in on the interim and did very, very well. And I'm very excited that she's going to be taking this role as well. She is a tremendous asset to us, as is our entire office staff here. We're very lucky to have her, and I know she's going to continue to excel in this new role. Any other comments or anything to follow up here?
I just want to say that she complements the working staff. They work beautifully together. It's very productive.
Absolutely. So, yeah, it's really, you know, being a person down, it's really amazing what the office staff has done. Everyone's been chipping in and working just amazing. And Meg taking the lead and really just doing a fantastic job as she always does. Thank you, Meg. So, yeah.
Also, no, I mean, it's also the salary that's about $14,000 less than what we're paying our previous treasurer. So there's some savings involved here too.
Right. She'll begin on the first step of the treasurer's one that was approved really good last year. So we're saving money in salary right there. And the next item, we're going to save even more. All right. I will ask for a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. So congratulations to Sarah Goldberg. Okay. The next position, we have Sarah Goldberg, who's going to be the new village clerk. She was previously the deputy treasurer, deputy clerk. And that was a full-time role, and that role received benefits and all that. We have decided, as a board, instead of replacing that with the new full-time position, to make that a part-time position. And this is going to save the village a tremendous amount of money. It's going to be just an hourly role, being paid $12 an hour, which is much less than in the past, and it's not going to be getting any benefits or anything. So it's really going to be saving us a lot. The office staff is going to have to work a little harder, and everyone's going to be stepping up to fill in the lack of having a full-timer there. But I know that, you know, everyone on staff has agreed to do so, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. So again, I appreciate our staff's work hard in allowing this. Because if we didn't have such a great staff, we wouldn't be able to eliminate half a position because that's where this is. We're eliminating half of a position. Can I have a motion for discussion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
The name. You're referring, or you're just going to?
This is to create the position, and then we have to advertise it, go through all that. Just, we've already contacted the county and everything. We'll have to put it out there. So anyone in the public is looking for a part-time role at $12 an hour, hopefully with some background in these type things, please send over your resume to the village of Ocean. All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good. All right. And this goes back to our communication item. The water and sewer bills that haven't been paid are going to need to be re-levee on people's property taxes. It's unfortunate, and it's definitely challenging times, and I absolutely understand the trouble that people are having. Legally, the board needs to do this. We don't have a choice. And to be fiscally viable, we need that revenue to come into the village. So I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
So moved. In a second?
Yes.
Any comments before we begin?
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. So, okay. Resolve to re-levee on the 2011-2012 village of Goshen property taxes, the amount of $174,334.57, reflecting the total amount of unpaid water and sewer bills for 2010. And we have the second and the first. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. This is some training for our staff. On a motion by trustee, seconded by trustee.
Matthews.
Cindy Tocanello and Manolo Berlana are hereby authorized to attend the New York Rural Water Association Nitrogen Removal Training Session on August 4th, 2011, at the Orange County Training Center in New Hampton, New York. It is understood that the total cost of this training is $28. So $28 to train two of our staff who continue to expand their horizons of knowledge of running these water centers. Really is amazing the time and efforts they put in and how really impressive they've been. And for it to be run in New Hampton, it's nice because it saves us money. All right. Any further discussion?
Only to say that they are obligated to get a certain amount of these hours.
Right. This is an extra training, just for whatever. This is, you know, mandated. So, okay. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. This is our contract with Cornerstone. As we continue to work with them, we need to amend this for some further testing to be done in the pile and, you know, in our further communications with D E C. It's important we have these testing results. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. The board hereby accepts the proposal from Cornerstone Environmental Group dated April 19, 2011, for post-excavation sampling and report of findings of stockpile material located on the village property adjacent to Route 17M. The mayor is hereby authorized to sign the proposal, which has a cost of $34,500 for general engineering services and $24,000 for work associated with the post-excavation sampling. So after the dirt is removed from the site, it has been our intent, and still is our intent, to market and sell the property, but we have to make sure that property is allowed to be sold. So we're going to have to do testing there afterwards as a last step. And I know that myself, and I'm sure the entire world will be happy once we get to that last step. So I'll just read a little bit more of the description of this before we vote. Remaining volume evaluation, multiple site visits, additional evaluation of disposal sites, cost evaluation of alternative disposal options, negotiations, preparation of bid package, correspondence to D E C, engineering oversight of loading operations, and additional sampling. So with that, any further discussion?
I just have one little question.
Sure.
About the alternative site. All of this is being mandated. I mean, mandated may not be the correct word, but it's being dictated to us that we have to take these additional steps, and I want the public to understand.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
It's such a, you know, becomes such a long, convoluted process. I want them to understand that things happen. The D E C says, you will now do this, you will now do this, and you will now do that.
Absolutely. That's a great point. Cornerstone and our village engineers, we're working very close to the D E C, having constant communication and saying, okay, D E C, what do we need to do, you know, with testing-wise? So we're working very closely with them, and this is all part of it. And it includes the letter, as requested by New York State D E C. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but the proposal we got from Cornerstone, everyone, Cornerstone Biomass Engineering, that's Taylor Recycling over Montgomery, where they do recycling, they gave the village board a proposal for their biomass facility, which, when it is constructed, they essentially will be taking garbage and turning it into energy. And they're looking for municipalities to bring them garbage. And the rate they provided was much less than we are paying currently. And it's something that I think I'd be interested in learning more on, potentially moving on, because it could save us a lot of money, and it's exciting. It's green energy. It's going to create fuel from garbage, literally just that. So unless anyone has an objection, I was going to have the representative from Cornerstone, I'm sorry, from Taylor, Taylor Biomass, representative from Taylor Biomass come to our next work session or whenever he or she is available and just give the last, answer any last questions that we have on this before we take action.
I think that's necessary because, you know, for example, when they talk about the scope of services, there's an A to B, that I need clarification for what they provide specifications for the proper equipment needed. That's whose fault.
Right.
You know, and certainly, we have to question where we keep essential locations for processing and storing and the 20 or three.
Right. Anybody who's listening, well, let's get answers.
Yeah. So I think it's necessary to have an.
Right. And on our end, we'll need to also do, and Michael may have already done this, but just do some studyings based on fuel. Because even though it's not that much further away, but Montgomery's a little further than where we're bringing our garbage now, so if our garbage truck's going to be taking more trips and longer trips, how much are we going to be spending in terms of fuel for that? And is this the most?
And the way our trucks are to travel.
Right. So.
What a CPI, to represent that.
Okay. So, okay, great. Last number seven that we added, on Friday, the village put out a bid for a 29 cubic yard high compact every rear loading body. This is for a truck. And we got our bid, the lowest one, came in at $72,000. And this is something from the '09 to 2010 budget, not for the future ones. This was already in the budget for last year. Or I guess it's still this fiscally, or we still have a few more weeks. Can I have a motion for discussion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion before we vote on this?
I just thought everybody understands. It's the body to the truck. Not the whole truck. It doesn't include the cab and part of the drive-haul truck. It's the part that goes on the back.
Right. And if we import the whole truck in one piece, it'd probably be a lot more. But then Michael's doing a very smart thing and looking at a piecemeal and saying, okay, look, can we get it here, can we get it there, and getting the cheapest cost. So, okay. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Trustee comments? Let's start with trustee Matthews.
Okay. Well, first, I'd like to thank for the lovely coverage that we got for our tree planting last week. That was very, very lovely thing. We had laid out our planting, and Michael and I will finalize that because with all of the work, and I must say with all of the work that's going on with New York State and the rest of the country, putting in the new lines, one of the critical things is that we're checking with each other because we don't want to see the destruction of trees and disturbance of trees that has now established itself over the last five years, 10 years. And working with them, we're hoping to limit the destruction of trees. And also, our planning schedule so that we don't have any conflict. I met today again with the president of Maplewood. We were going over some of the work that has been done in the mayor's office, and it really looked up good. Talking about selections, and we were lucky enough to have Lita upstairs to cure grass through the courtroom, and we'll be able to do some painting. Very lucky that the courts still are able to receive some grass, but not very many of them around, which will cover new painting and clear tables and work to be done on the side. So I look forward to that. And second that, the leak survey was done annually. We do a leak survey throughout the village, which has been very successful in highlighting leaks that, you know, you don't find out about them until they surface somewhere. And even then, it's very, very difficult because the migration of the water could show up, you know, many, many feet away, as you can all tell when we have a water main leak. And they have to really divine where the leak comes from, from their experience. The leak detection survey shows us where we have to attend immediately, and I'm happy to say that there were no large leaks down anywhere in the system. There were, however, a couple of house leaks, you know, just a service for an individual houses that had leaks. One of them, Crescent Place, that is already done repair, and two more that are scheduled for immediate repair. We also did the hydro flushing, which cleans out the system. We like to do it in the spring, and luckily, that went without very many bit of pluses at all. And cleans up the water, cleans up the river. And we have ongoing communication with the county, with the D E C, C R B well, and are looking for the county to finish the redesign of the bridge, which is not that we have been inattentive at all. We have constant communication. And that's where we're waiting for. That's it?
Good. Thank you. Trustee Stewart?
Thank you. As everyone I'm sure is aware, the annual spring bulk pickup was completed. The crews have been out and prepared road excavations that were made last winter in connection with water leaks. The sewer service has been connected to the new bathroom at Sulezian Park. And also, our D P W crew has assisted in the electronics recovery day for residents that, and the business community, which the chamber had advertised, which took place last Friday. That's it.
And that was a big pile.
Trustee Chuck?
Thank you. Two items. First is a reminder that on August 6th, Arden Hill will be closing. There will be no hospital emergency services after that date. So if you need emergency services on August 6th or thereafter, have to go to the New Orange Regional Facility, which is off Route 17 and Route 122 in the town of Wallkill. And secondly, weather is now getting nicer. Just ask motorists to be aware of pedestrians and bicyclists so that we can hopefully avoid any unnecessary accidents or incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Smith?
Yeah. The senior center, we were able to, this past week, capitalize on the fact that the Chamber of Commerce had sponsored the recycling for computers and electronics. And we were able to discard a truckload full of stuff that had been hoarded away in there for years in the senior center. And also, the D P W was nice enough to put together a bunch of books that they purchased and stuff as well. So thank you for that. Also, on the 25th of May, they're having a casino trip to.
Eaganson?
Well, Eaganson. I'm sorry. The one in Pennsylvania. And so they still have, they need to, there were about nine people short of making their capacity, so there's still opportunities there if somebody wants partaking.
Good. Thank you. First, just a few people mentioned, I want to thank the Chamber and Lynn Seome for providing that service through that company where people could dispose of their TVs and monitors and things like that. Because that was really something that was made. It was, for the first time, it was done very, very well utilized. I was surprised at how much stuff they really collected out there. So thank you to Lynn and the Chamber of Commerce and to the business that did so. Early today, I went to the quiz ball competition of the middle school. Goshen's team was doing very well. Definitely some very, very intelligent students, so I'm sure going to do some great things in the future. Last Wednesday night was our economic development seminar with the town, the joint economic development initiative. That was a huge success, I thought. A lot of good conversation came out of that, a lot of good information. Just the first step, and we'll need to follow up by doing some more things now, but I think it was a really great first step. So I just want to thank Phil Dropkin for putting that together, all the presenters that came out, and supervisor Bloomfield for helping to put it together as well. And next, sewer infrastructure. This week, we're going to begin our work on the sewer main that's on Erie Street to prevent that overflow from happening. And I'm going to ask engineer John Ward to give us a brief summary on that project, what people might see if they drive by and all that.
Yes. Basically, remember, there was a broken sewer line across the rye right there. We know by D E C, they're very happy that we're going to begin the work. I was out there with Mike this morning. We walked the project site, did some preliminary test calls, located the pipe, confirmed the size of the pipe. Tomorrow, he will be setting up for work to begin on Wednesday. Basically, we're going to bypass the sewer in that area, and we're also going to have to sandbag the rye in that area as well. Weather's perfect this week for it. No rain forecasted. The county has been notified, and again, D E C has been notified of the work we anticipated, taking approximately two days. So we should be done by the end of this week, and that broken pipe will be then replaced.
Excellent. I know I'm excited, and I know the D E C is very excited to see this work begin. This is our first major step in our infrastructure improvements that will help us eliminate the sewer overflow that the village has had for decades. And last, just a feel-good thing. Last week, the Orange County Citizens Foundation gave Rich Rowley the Ottawa Medal for Achievement, and I just want to publicly commend Rich Rowley. With that, we have an executive session last, but before we do so, citizens' comments. If there are none, I'll ask for a motion.
Go ahead. Two questions tonight, not a long list. One of you may be involved. The first one is with regard to the contaminated dirt. And we have a status update where that is. And along with that, sort of part B, is where did the consent order and compliance conferencing stand?
Okay. David, do you want to touch on that?
In terms of the consent order, that's still not finalized. I think what the attorney general wants to do is combine the stockpile with the remediation program for the sewer surcharges. That's ongoing, so when that's done, those things will be finalized at that time. In terms of the stockpile, we're hopeful that work will commence the end of the month. Contract's been paid, which he's very happy about, so are subcontractors. The idea now that we've had this free hiatus is we are evaluating, we'll be meeting Cornerstone later this week if we can shave some money off it. That's what we're doing now.
Is it the negotiation or the work to be done?
Any, what, anything we can do, not the work he does. That's what I asked him of.
Okay. So if we can find enough, yeah. Well, in these projects, a lot of things with these landfill remediations, it's about timing. You know, when there's a landfill that needs the material, when there's a landfill that doesn't, and all that. So when we first began work, we analyzed everything that was in, you know, a radius. We said, okay, Middlesex County was the best thing. Now we're talking, you know, five months later, we want to take a step back and make sure, okay, is there anything new that's come up in the last few months that wasn't there prior? So we're just evaluating that. And there might not be, but it would move us to make sure. So is there anything else to answer that today?
No. I mean, basically, we had this opportunity with the work slowed down for a little bit while the financing fed caught up to evaluate, is there a place we can bring up all this money? And that's what we're doing now.
Back in December, January, you were. Back in December, January, you were talking about the consent order wrapping up by the end of February. Here we are in May. Is that just the A G.'s office sort of drawing it out, or are there issues that are yet to be resolved?
No, there are no other issues. I can tell you that from a practical point of view, we needed to finish the work that was being done on the sewer surcharges. I, from my perspective, I certainly haven't pushed the consent order. We need to do the work, we need to get rid of the stockpile material, we need to fix the sewer surcharges. The consent order at the end of the day, that cost us money. Okay? So I haven't really, in terms of fines and environmental better projects. So I have to be honest with you, Joe, I really have to be pushing that money, I've pushed getting word on it. That's basically what I'm...
Can that be interpreted as saying that the A G.'s office has confirmed that there will be fines on both the sewer and the dirt pile?
He hasn't segregated them into one or the other, but he's certainly discussed every conversation, fines. And I don't know that necessarily makes a difference, X is for X and Y is for Y, because it's still money out of taxpayers' pockets.
Understood. Not happily, but understood.
That's right.
The second question I had was with regard to Cornerstone and your resolution tonight for additional funds to be paid to them for additional work. Just approximately, can you give us some idea of what they received last year?
I do not, I wouldn't want to guess.
There's a number that's notable, so let's get the number, and not...
Let me ask subpart B. on that then. I remember, and God knows, I remember is not what it used to be, but I remember a resolution for, which I believe was in August of 2010, for an $80,000 payment to Cornerstone for testing at that point. I don't remember any other resolutions for payment to them, other than that one, there was an interim, a small amount of money, there was some back and forth thing on it...
For testing.
For testing, as to what was already authorized, what wasn't, but it was basically chump change, it was under $10,000 or so dollars. Have they been paid above and beyond that large resolution? And if so, under what kind of authorization?
Well, everything's been under village board authorizations, but I don't want to give you a number without being able to confirm it, so...
You're asking me without a number? Has there been payment additional to Cornerstone, above and beyond that one major testing program, which was never clear whether that was carried out or not? Have, under your authority as mayor, or John's authority as mayor, or under the mayor's authority, let's put it that way, have they been paid for work above and beyond what has been publicly discussed?
I don't have it in front of me, I don't want to speculate, so...
Well, we'll give you the amount, everything's been, they've been paid, they're paid pursuant to the contract of contract development. What that total number is, I don't know, that anyone knows offhand. They submit vouchers periodically, they get processed, they get approved, and they get paid.
Okay, I didn't recall that there was a contract other than for that testing.
Yeah, no, other than that, for that testing, yeah, there's a contract that Mayor Higgins would have entered into, probably going back as far as, I would say summer of '09, because they have their report in September of '09, their initial report now. And I know they didn't do that for free.
Just quickly on the water, we just flushed. We're not going back to twice a year, there will be no fall flushing, is that the annual flushing of the lines?
Unless it becomes test, there's no way for me to answer your question. If the flushing is done annually, we'll need to keep things flowing and clean, and unless you run into a difficulty, that's when we...
Oh, I was asking, we're not going to be doing it twice a year as a regular...
Unless it's bad.
Good, thanks. Mr. Andrews?
Ah, yes. The Cornerstone amounts, did any of that go out to bid?
With our engineer Cornerstone?
Yeah, I mean, for the amount, for the work that that Cornerstone is doing, under the $34,000 and the $25,000, did that go out to bid?
It's a professional service contract, and it requires the business.
Why?
It's a professional service contract, there's no requirement to bid.
There's no requirement?
How with rational services, though?
Not at all.
Not at all. It's a specific exception. But we did have a conversation with a different engineering firm that is in the same niche, and we talked to them and everything, they confirmed that everything was, you know, status quo there.
When you refer to the water, there was special assessments? What are the special assessments?
There's a $10 water special assessment on your sewer and wine bill.
Okay, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Back a couple of meetings, there was some discussion about a broken pipe at the sewer plant. What was that, the pipe at the sewer plant?
Yeah, there was some discussion that there's basically three sets of pipes that come down the Heritage Trail there. There's a manhole right on the Heritage Trail, and there's a pipe that runs from one of those manholes across the rye oar ramp to the plant. And Art had explained to us that there, I don't know that it was broken, that they were going to replace it. Well, there's a bypass that's, yeah. I was going to say, the pipe was, it's broken. Yeah, the pipe is not broken, it's working fine. As part of the I and I program that we're coordinating with D E C., we're looking into replacing and upgrading the size of that pipe right now, an 18-inch line that carries three other pipes. So by increasing that existing pipe size to a larger pipe size, we'll get more flow to the plant and hopefully reduce some of the surcharges that's occurring in the village.
Your reason I said broken, because it had been referred to as broken when it was mentioned in the meeting, so...
Okay, I don't recall that, it very well might have been, but he just described it the other project.
What's the status of the arbitration with the town?
Arbitration is ongoing.
It seems to be dragging. Is that just my imagination?
Do you want to speak to that?
I mean, dragging on is unfortunately the nature of my profession. I would assume that we'll be back taking testimony as early as next week or the week after.
Has there been any testimony?
There has been, Supervisor Bloomfield has testified.
Is he the only one that has testified?
He's the only one that's testified. We, we being the village attorneys, made some legal arguments to the arbitrator. He decided last Friday that we were partially right, the town was partially right, and that the arbitration needs to go forward.
Is that the situation where you were trying to have it thrown out?
Well, what we were trying to say, what we were saying is that it's not the place for the court, let me back up a second. The town has advanced the position that the plant is bigger than it needs to be, and that they shouldn't have to pay a pro round share of a plant that's bigger than it needs to be. The village's position is that we believe that that's a legislative decision, science applies a legislative decision, not to be second-guessed by the judiciary or the arbitrator. The arbitrator essentially ruled that the town cannot directly challenge that, but they may indirectly challenge that through the amount of the bill. So frankly, right, we're sort through with exactly what that means, and then we're going to start taking testimony. I spoke briefly to the town attorney on Friday, not this week, but it's rumored to be next week.
Are there other attorneys involved in this case, the village besides yourself?
And the six attorneys from Westchester that was rumored to be involved? No, myself and my partner.
Just yourself and...
And my talent.
And Mike, and that's that?
That's right, yeah. I don't know, if you recall, there was this rumor, anxiety, that, I guess it was more than a rumor, that I had high-priced talents from out of town that were coming in to do something, but that's not true. It's Mike and me.
Okay. Have there been a considerable number of briefs that have been filed in this situation?
I would not call them considerable.
Have there been a number of briefs?
There's been a memorandum of law from the village, a response from the town, and a reply from the village.
That's the expanded?
That's the expanded, right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Back when you had the public hearing on the budget, I brought up the question as to the fact that there was a category that was not listed in the budget, and you, Mr. Mayor, said that you were going to refer to the attorney for that, and I was wondering what the answer was.
Which category was that?
Well, in a budget, you're supposed to have, according to the law...
Oh, the column, the year. I thought you were editing it.
No, you have to have two of those years, the budgeted amount and the actual amount, and you don't have that. You have on the new budget, you added, you did add one on there, but you only have one year for 2010, the actual. You're supposed to have the budget amount. As the law requires, one completed year, 10 is not completed yet. It'll be completed at the end of May.
I believe we added '09 to '10 in there.
No, you did not add '09, unless I have a different copy of what your...
We added '09. We'll double check.
I mean, was it, you know, is it a fact that that's supposed to be in there, because I think there was going to, you had referred to the attorney for that?
Right. And when you spoke about that, the next day, we looked at it, and we said, "Okay, let's add it in that previous year."
Oh, we did so.
Well, there's supposed to be two headings of that year, the actual and the amount spent. What was budgeted and the actual amount spent?
Okay.
I don't think it's in there.
We will look into it, ready?
Okay.
Do you have any other questions this evening?
No.
All right, thank you. Any other citizen comments? Yes, Neil?
Just again, like I'd asked before, the copy of receipt or a bill from Tan to the village for the work done to restore water from the water main on West Main Street to 159 West Main Street.
Did we get all of that, Meg? We need to talk to Mike. Mike, okay. Neil, I'm going to be here in the morning tomorrow. Before he leaves, I'll give you my cell, give me a call tomorrow, and I'll talk to Mike.
Thank you.
That way I can get you an answer tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. I apologize for everything going on.
No, I understand you're between treasurers and...
It's just as important as anything else, and I wanted to get you an answer.
Thank you.
The answer might be that I can't find everything, I don't know what's going to happen, but we'll talk tomorrow, though.
All right. And then, will the treasurer ever deliver a report, or pardon me, not the treasurer, the historian, as to what the historian's office might be doing?
Would you like that?
That would be nice, yeah. I've been covering the village, I think, just about three years now, and I've never heard a historian's report, and that would be interesting.
I think he's working on a second book right now.
Yeah.
Is that his project, though, or is that on behalf of the village?
I think that's in the cabinet project.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know what he's actually doing for the village.
Do you want to speak to him this evening?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
All right, there's no other citizen comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session, to which we do no business and we return.
And they purpose the executive session to discuss the litigation with the town.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, since my office is not finished yet, we want to use this room, so I thank you everyone for coming outside.
Much appreciated.